We will call our Scottsburg Council to order. This is March the fourteenth of the year two thousand twenty-two. Uh, keep us bringing you up, welcome. And uh, first thing we do is have a prayer and have a couple of readings. So if you would like to stand, we'll have a prayer. Pledge allegiance. Father, we come before you to thank you for a day of life today. Uh, we thank you, Father, for the health you've given to all of us, for the strength you've given to all of us, and, Father, we just praise your name. Thank you for the spillage of life that you allow us to go through. Father, we, the world is in such a disarray right now. Father, we pray for those in Ukraine. Father, we pray for their safety. We pray for their tenacity. We pray, Father, for your strength and wisdom. Father, we pray for, and then to come to this, and that peace be had in that region again, Father. Uh, we pray, Father, for our leaders in, in America. We pray, Father, for our president, for the Congress, Father, and for those who make decisions that affect all of us. Uh, we pray for your will, Father, and your guidance in these areas. Father, pray for our town. Father, pray for Scottsburg, pray for Scott County, and also, Father, all the folks who live here. We pray, Father, for your wisdom and your understanding for, for council and, and for Jan and myself, Father, that you just give us ideas, that you give us your presence in. And with wisdom, your word says, pray to those who lack wisdom, to ask for the Father gives them, please. So we pray for a meaningful, uh, asking, Father, of this. We love you and praise you, just, and we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda this evening is the rule called by our current Treasury, Jan Hargit.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hopeless.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, the trip weight fourteenth we need. If you've had time to look those forward and see no corrections, we'll accept a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make the most of it.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second? I'll say. Chris Albertson, seconds. Any questions, comments about that? Eric Nettle, ready to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close live sign, unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is a time of public comment. The city of Scottsburg, I'm sorry, the Scottsburg City Council accepts public opinions. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Whose person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remark should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees who are likely to fish. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward and like to address city council?
Is that us?
No.
No.
No, you're on, you're on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right here at the museum, right?
Museum, right, yeah, no. Now, this is just for public, public comments. Okay, hearing that, we'll close the public comments, thank you very much. New business thing is to ratify the broad being advisory board. Uh, Braxton Soul, who was an intern here, uh, that works for Scottsburg District Two now. Uh, Eric Lowry is the planning commission, and Mark Nicholson in BZA works over here. So we'll accept a motion to accept those, or if you have any questions or comments about these, we'll take those as well.
I'll make a motion.
Rick Mans makes the motion to ratify, uh, these different members, is there a second?
I'll say.
Chuck, for those seconds, any questions or comments? Eric Nettle, ready to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As soon as you announce, we're getting days. Okay, unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, the next thing is, uh, council appointment of Eric Lowry to BZA as well. So, uh, we will have a motion, I guess, to put him on the BZA, I think it's council appointment. So, uh, so do we have a motion then to go forward and put him in motion? Okay, Bill Hopeless makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Christian Evans, seconds. Any questions, comments? Eric Nettle, ready to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing is the presentation of the Veterans Heritage Museum. Now, Veterans, sorry, thank you. Come right here, folks. Tell us who, tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're from, what you have, what you would like to do.
Okay, um, where I'm from, we live in Scottsburg, we're not orig- originally from here. Uh, I'm from New Hampshire of all places, and my wife is from Virginia. Uh, we, we've called Scottsburg home now for a few years. Uh, we operate a museum that originally intended to bring a submarine to Louisville, Kentucky, uh, on the Ohio River. Um, Louisville went through, as everybody knows, and kind of a bad time, thrives, you know, assemblies and all kinds of stuff, their economy kind of went downhill, the submarine didn't manifest there. Uh, but we still have a museum that was put together with a five oh one C three and a submarine that we needed to find a home for. So we began work on that and spent, we were invested in timelines about two years now, uh, saving the submarine. It, it went from a rust bucket that was sunk in place to a floating, uh, submarine ready to go to a dry dock to get repaired. In that time, we acquired another boat, which was a U.S. Army World War Two craft boat. It rescued down pilots of World War Two. Uh, and we brought it around from California to Maryland to get repaired because of the damage. But what we found in, in doing that was we, we were finding all this military equipment that has history behind it and no place to go. And then COVID did, uh, as everybody knows, it challenged everything. And, uh, a little smaller military museum started to go out of business, so to speak. Um, I don't believe it needs a military museum to be in business to, to be a money-making powerhouse, but, uh, they couldn't sustain themselves, many closed. Uh, we acquired a military museum in Pennsylvania that has, uh, an enormous amount of armor and, and pieces. I don't want to bore you with the specifics of what it's called. It is, it's a, it's an entire military museum with a, a jet fighter from the Vietnam era, a helicopter from the Vietnam era. Uh, and we had a place, didn't have a place to put it. And when Louisville was kind of out of the picture, we lived here. Uh, we thought, well, we love Scottsburg, we love Scottsburg, we love our military, our veterans. Why not kind of make ground zero in the Scottsburg area? Uh, as you can go, uh, travel all over the country in, in the past three years that we've been doing the museum stuff, and I've seen ups and downs with museums and what they go through, challenges and kind of what I like to see. Not that I'm, I'm just one person, but, uh, my, my vision for a museum was something that wasn't stagnant. That museums, you know, they get stuffy, they get old. So we wanted to do something that was fresh and, and kind of bold. Uh, so we, we kind of started putting the idea together to assemble all this equipment and find a place suitable down here to attract people. Uh, you know, every city's trying to bring in tourism and get people to stop. And Scottsburg's got a great opportunity with exit twenty-nine. I mean, you know, a lot of cities don't have a, an exit off the interstate. I don't know the numbers of the interstate travel, but, uh, everybody travels sixty-five and it's non-stop, bumper to bumper. Uh, if we could pull a fraction of that off to a military museum to, uh, educate and, and like I said in my presentation, honor the, the veterans that, that served in this, on, with this stuff, uh, I think would be a win-win. Um, and then I, so I kind of put together a tactic of just, uh, I'm not a professional. I just wrote down our ideas and, and thoughts and challenges that we saw doing this and, uh, challenges we've overcome with, with the craft boat that we have. Uh, it's a, it's a four million dollar boat. It requires a lot of ancients and a lot of money put into it. So our challenge was, add everything, where do you find funding for it? So we kind of got a, kind of a handle on fundraising and how to put the projects together. Uh, but that's kind of where we're at with, with this, is we would be looking for land. And then, and that was the mayor, and, uh, kind of had an idea of some land here, uh, that we drove out there and looked. It's kind of perfect for us. We, we're not looking for huge, you know, huge successes or endorsements. I mean, uh, we want to do this ourselves as much as possible. And, uh, we don't want to take from the city, we, we want to bring back, you know, give to the city. Uh, so that's kind of, kind of where we're at. We, we came here tonight to kind of bring you the idea of a military museum, about a new age military museum that, uh, you know, it can, um, it can teach people skills. Uh, I was listening to a meeting before, and the mayor had mentioned apprenticeships and stuff years, ages ago. Uh, we would do something similar. Uh, all this stuff needs painting and restoration and work. And we would attract, hopefully, high school students, people that are trying to find new careers and stuff, maybe teach welding, teach painting. There's just a host of occupational skills that can be taught. Uh, and then there's the kids. Uh, every community, like I said, I've traveled all over, uh, where our boats at in Cambridge, if you're there after dark, seven, eight o'clock at night, uh, there's a crowd of kids roaming the streets. So no cities need to, to youth challenges. Uh, but we, I, I think, since that's our future, you know, we need to embrace maybe teaching them, uh, get, get them into something that they can enjoy and, and learn from and maybe be a part of. You know, give them something to, uh, some sense of pride. Uh, so many kids get lost in the system, uh, with stuff. You know, and I believe when a kid gets in trouble, uh, work on giving them a second chance, you know. Some kids you're not going to reach, it's just a fact of life. We would like to offer a, within the museum, something to, you know, tell a child, okay, you made this mistake. Why don't you come over here and try this out? If you're good at it, maybe you can, you know, pay a re-fee, so to speak. Um, and then, uh, veteran outreach, you know, the, we want to help veterans with PTSD and that type of struggle, uh, to maybe have a purpose again, to, to come over to something and, and their familiar military equipment, you know. So let's get them involved and, uh, and try to help them out. Uh, so that's kind of my spiel. Uh, I don't mean to battle, it's, uh, compassionate about it, I love history. Um, and, uh, you know, we just like to try to put something together. Uh, there, there doesn't, it doesn't suck from the city, you know, it, it gives back. Uh, we certainly need some help, that, I'm not going to deny that. We're trying to, in this plan, I kind of put together a, kind of an, my idea in an economic way, they did it off the ground without investing huge amounts of money and that kind of stuff, so.
Give your names again, folks.
Uh, my name's Louis Palmer, L W Lyer.
And I'm Brett Dick.
Brett the what?
Brett Dick.
They, they came to the veterans, uh, down here on, uh, Lovesley and Main Street and presented this to us, and so, uh, the, we, the city has some property that, that we possibly could use over by Wilson Park. There was some area that goes down, uh, down toward the interstate that it could possibly be seen from the interstate and advertised that way. So I did not know if the council had any desire to look at any of that, or you might ask them questions. Uh, you know, so that was the idea, if you had any desire to go forward with this, you may want to have time to look this over.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm just going to ask a question because I don't see an economic proposal. I see the things that you have and the things that you, but like, what kind of finances? I mean, not profit, like numbers, you know, I, you know. Believe me, I, I, I'm, I love the idea. I'm a social studies teacher, a history teacher. My, uh, my uncle served, was the second day in, in D-Day, so from Austin, Indiana. And so, um, there was a lot of those guys that did that. And what was it, Ray Miranda, didn't he serve in North Africa?
Roy.
Roy, right.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and then, uh, so we had a lot of folks there that did that. So I love the idea, but like anything, we, we have a limited number of resources and I, I would want to know kind of what would be the proposal? I mean, you know, do, do you understand what I'm saying, fellas? I don't know at all. And that's just me, I don't know, I can't speak for the entire council.
What are you asking for the city to do for your financial?
Uh, what we needed, uh, to get off the ground, and looking, assuming that was the property that, that we could use, uh, we would, uh, obviously need electric out there, you know, the amenity type things, electric, water, uh, that kind of stuff. Um, from, there would be help from the city to connect to, uh, because I think that's the biggest off-ground investment. But as far as, uh, funding goes after that, we were looking at, at simply yard barn type buildings to, to kind of make it look like a World War Two camp. So I, I tried, I don't want to, I don't want to tell the city, hey, we need a big, huge metal, it's tragic, a building, you know, I want to do it on a budget that, that we can do as much of it as we can through fundraising. Uh, we would approach businesses and that kind of stuff to, and if we can put two buildings in to start with, we, we work with two buildings. Next year, maybe we have two more and we grow it that way. Um, the, uh, the challenges, for example, and with the rise of the gas prices and fuel prices, is the transport of all the equipment here. Um, I wouldn't want to ask the city for help with that. I would rather go to private funding to cover diesel fuel. For example, I have a gentleman who's loaned us his truck and truck to haul this equipment from Pennsylvania here, it's, it's got a fair distance, but, so he's put the truck up, and then our next leg would be, okay, if we can haul two pieces at a time, here's, you know, estimate our fuel costs and approach, uh, funders out, like private funders. Uh, I wouldn't, like I said, I don't want to ask the city for any more than the bare bones to get us launched, kind of. We'd rather do it privately. Cities are struggling through economic times, and I don't want to be one of those, one of those burdens.
You, uh, you mentioned property, do we know how many acres do you think you'll need or how many we have available or?
About approximately thirty acres.
Okay. So you're talking about the, the property over right next to the interstate?
Yeah.
Along kind of north of the YMCA?
Yes, so to say, called Lowe, yeah. But I thought it could, you know, it would get views going by, so, uh, when I get into the property, it's only going to use the property. So, but I think you would have to have, you know, if you're going to, you're bringing all this from Pennsylvania, I'm going to assume it's probably six hundred to seven hundred miles.
Yeah, it's probably an eight-hour trip, so.
So if it's six hundred miles, and you're, I kept nineteen different places, nineteen different things in your inventory here, and some of that, I don't know if you'd get to on a truck.
Now, uh, for example, the aircraft, uh, would have to be transported, either taken apart and transported, uh, which oddly enough, the way it was transported there was a National Guard training operation. They airlifted it, uh, which is something similar we could approach, uh, to have done, uh, to do training missions and that kind of stuff. Um, but yeah, in bulk, it would be, uh, be a oversized load, uh, vehicle. Now, like I said, with the, with diesel fuel, gas play now, uh, price, it presents a challenge, not, not something we're not going to tackle, but, uh, I, I don't want to sit here and pretend I have like some spreadsheet of numbers and, and, uh, you know, the economic, uh, assessments and stuff right now.
I'm, I would be interested, I just would, I mean, we could, I wouldn't be able to support anything without some detailed plan. And, and I know that, like, like you said, the city, it's not like we're flushed with money.
Right.
So, I mean, if you, if you, if you were twelve hundred miles, six hundred each way, and Cody, you're going to go out, you're going to come back. It's twelve hundred miles. If that tractor gets about six miles a gallon, it's two hundred gallons of fuel. So two hundred gallons of fuel, in today's prices, I mean, you're on the world's five dollars. So, so you would have to have some type of a plan, I would think you would want to show the council and how you would, you know, you actually, if they actually wanted to go forward with this, do you have the funding to do that?
And I, I was curious too, having you talk with the Visitors Commission about this idea, that seems to be something that would fit in.
No, I'm, I don't want to say me, and I didn't know there was a Visitors Commission, uh, which I'm happy.
I, I think that would be a good step for you to do, just to, like, Chesworth's the director and, and, you know, it sounds like something, an idea that's a little more out of the box than some of the, some of the ones that you've been working for, so I'd encourage you to talk with him. Said their submission's still on their part, they also have some money, so.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think it's, you know, when that's a decision, that's, so, but, uh, but I think it's something that, would you like to see more of this?
I, I would be open to look, I mean, if there was something in writing, with, I mean, I like this. I mean, it's a nice idea, isn't it, all this programming, but it's, no, there's no numbers. And so, before we would ever entertain anything, I, I mean, I, it's just like the four-H game, and they say, hey, we need this amount of money, or whoever, there was some other people we helped over there. I mean, there's, there's a budget, there's a, you know, that kind of thing, and that's kind of what I would. And not saying, I'm not being negative, I'm just saying that we have to be stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Right. Well, and, and at this point, uh, you know, the armor is kind of, I, um, it's signed over. I have two acres of land outside of town, and that's, that's where it's ending up. And it's not a museum, you know. I don't want to, I don't want to look at you like, well, I'll just take my toys and go home. It, it's going to come to Scottsburg whether, you know, some way, somehow, it's just what can I do with it? And, and you make great points. I'm, I'm not a, uh, this is my first city council adventure, so to speak. Um, and I, I'm not a professional at it, I'm just a diesel mechanic, so, you know. I'm happy to learn what you need, and I'm happy to come back with that, if you.
Well, if you have this an idea, you know, you said water and, uh, electricity and things like that. If we had more of an idea of, you know, where you want it, what, you know, what you want to start with, that, that'd give us an idea of the expense involved and getting some stuff done. We need to look at, you know, where, where's the closest access point, how's, how's it going to cost to, to do the work, so. But, but I agree with, uh, with Councilman Mans, I, I, I think it's a good idea. Let's, let's start looking and see what, what options are available, you know. Can't wait, can't wait to work together to do something.
This is the financial arm of the city, so I think you have interest from the council members. I think, or at this point, that was your first, I think, stop, so if they have an interest in it. And then, I think you need to probably show them how you can get the product here.
Right.
And, and maybe the council even look at it, you know, so that, that you can say, hey, we're going to give you this amount of space. I give you to you, but you use it as the rest of the space. And, uh, and, and, and Councilman Rose, okay, there is a financial arm that, uh, that receives money from the room tax, and they are promoting Scott County. So that would be an area that you could look at for any type of funding as well. So, but, but I think council would need to know how you get it here and to make sure what, what you're asking in the city financially.
Right.
But I think if you have it here, if you just want a place to put it, you know, what everything looks like, because we want it to look nice, we want it to enhance our city.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You don't want a junkyard, I, I mean, for example, in Wisconsin, I've been to a site called Russell Military Museum. It's just a junkyard. It's some guy's collection of rusted-out junk over here. I don't want to attempt, I don't want anything like that, I wouldn't want to put my name on it, uh, as a per example, so, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Mr. President, what are the questions?
I have them, do you have any?
If you have any, just give us for, for council.
Uh, just, uh, I, we'll start working on the economic side of the budget. Uh, should we plan to come back for the?
Sure.
Next, next meeting, I guess.
We're going to be, we have the second or fourth of my idea every month.
Okay.
So, we'll be again in two weeks. So if you want to come back to get ahold of Ms. Jill, and she'll be chair of the document, and you can present.
Right.
You present your financial on that, you know.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the name of the submarine boat?
Uh, Ling.
Of what?
Ling, L-I-N-G.
Ling. Was it a battle class sub, diesel?
Uh, yeah, a layer class, World War Two.
Yeah, World War Two.
Yeah, when she came out, she was the last submarine produced at the end of the war. So she went to the Pan Am now, the war ended.
I love that.
And she came up on a museum and, and museum and one or so, and she did too, so.
Can we give that, like, a mention?
She bribes them to have, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. They actually had, if you've ever been to Chicago, the Museum of Science and Industry, they actually, they actually boarded, the United States Navy boarded a German submarine, and they pulled the plug on it, and so they already planned, they knew right where the plugs had to get out, and because the Germans were, were exiting the submarine, and the U.S. Navy was entering the submarine, and they got that thing plugged, and got it all plugged up, and you can go up there and walk through to that. Yeah, you walk in, you walk in, they, they started to open up the bow. And it had a cobbler of a hundred and two men, there's two bathrooms, and one of them was broken at the time, they, they couldn't have to sit. So, they're really quite interesting.
Yeah.
So. So, you know, they have a lot of names, and, and, you know, average, we all want to support the veterans, so some of them, maybe it could be of interest to you.
I ask you to hear.
Well, the party now will. For sure. Uh, okay. Okay, next thing we have on our genodite is a, if you turn to your last page, where are you? Look at the, uh, look at that string, uh, but you have a picture of our welding class. And at the Mid-American Science Park, we opted to put some new awnings up. The awnings were, were, uh, if you got, if you got the names as well, I've looked through, you got the names?
It should be attached.
Okay.
Is it on?
I didn't see it, but I'll look again. And, uh, uh, but in taking the canvas down, they found that several regions booked, some of the frameworks itself, it's a load. So we took them out to the Mid-American Science Park, and folks went and worked on it. So you can see how they, uh, you know, fixed these, rewelded, put in new metal, they had to buy some new metal, and put in new metal, so it's been quite an accomplishment for our young folks. And anybody with names?
I'm like.
The head of the World War Two, but I can see this, this is like council. Back to you, boy. Coomer, boy, was one of them. Uh, you said Coomer was one of them, yeah, there was a Coomer, there were several.
This is Mr. Richmond's class, Brian Richmond's class.
I had, I had a instructor there too, still, let me see if I can find him.
I think he was one.
But these are high schools too?
High school students.
Yeah, that was the Mr. White.
Oh, yeah, Artie's got it. Uh, yeah. Uh, the names are Grant Comer, Jake Graham, Caleb Turner, Jordan Thompson, and Cody Carter.
Do they give the professor's name?
It does not.
Okay. That would be Mr. Richmond.
Okay, so.
Brian.
We just want to give a shout out and a thank you to everyone that participated in that. I guess where it's located at today? The drive-through window. So if you happen to drive through, if you want to, you know, stay out of the rain, look up, and you're going to see, now, we have painted, we have painted the, uh, the stands that we got in the area yet, so that has been painted, it's worth. Good weather coming in here, we'll paint those stands and, and have a ribbon cutting there, so.
So they were able to put the fabric and everything in as well?
Well, they didn't put the fabric, they, they made the frame. Once the frame was here, we contacted the campus folks, said, okay, we got your frame back. So they went down to the Mid-American Science Park, loaded up, brought it in here, and then put it up. But the whole idea of what they took that whole frame apart, rewelded, put new metal in where needed it. I mean, and it's just fantastic. I mean, and it's just fantastic, you know, that's awesome.
That's great, those kind of parts, I like them.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we just want to make everybody in Scottsburg aware of this and, and, uh, give all the guys a fist bump when, you know, when you see them and, and a big thank you going forward to, to our welding center up there. For sure, so. Also, Willie has redone things at the electric department, he is a side gig. So he would love to give you an invitation to come out to Scottsburg Electric and see all the things that have changed. So, uh, it is absolutely amazing, you can drive a car in there. I mean, there's all kinds of room and there's been identifying, I mean, things are parceled out. The broadband area has an area there where they have all their parts. And, uh, and going forward, and Willie has all these things, I think I've mentioned this before, they have been, you know, so, he's real proud about it. So I've been out there, so if you guys would like to stop, I'd say, well, you could give me a tour, give us a two dollar tour. I'm sure he would love to do that. So he wants to make sure that you guys knew to, uh, to come on out if, if you have a chance, so. What do we have on other announcements, Mr. President?
We're just ready for the public workshop.
Okay.
Close it.
Does anybody else have any announcements? I have, uh, just to let you know, uh, on the waste of our water treatment plant where we had the sludge that had been put into the lagoons and that sludge was removed and was put in a, in a place that we couldn't put it in. We transferred that and we were, they allowed us to, they did all kinds of tests, all the tests were fine, we could land apply it, the product, we landed, applied it out in the Smith Farm and they inspected it and all those inspections came back totally fine. Probably some of the best crops they had up there. So, uh, it was that. And then also, uh, being able to Scottby manufacturing to Councilman Holden, uh, Board Warner Attorney has looked over all of those charges that ID was charging. He's agreed to pay that, so they're paying ID, as soon as they get the ID with the check, that proceed, process will move forward. Once we have the clean bill of health, uh, on that ground film, does it work? Uh, it will come over to you on the, uh, on the cemetery. So, thank you, absolutely. So that's where thirty years there, so, so for sure. And, and also the, uh, the municipal, uh, software that were for ordinances, we've got that all completed as well. So you'll see that on the, on our website even for, so. Okay, anything else before we go to the public workshops? So, uh, hearing none, we will then go to Heart Park Council. We have seven o'clock public workshops, we're about five minutes, we'll start up in it.